All right. Start anytime, Josh? Okay. Hello, welcome, everybody. Welcome to the Cerritos Neighborhood Watch City Council Candidate Debate. Thank you to all the candidates for participating tonight. I am your moderator, Jennifer Palopel. We are joined online with people on Zoom being recorded by the folks back there and also members of the audience here at Cerrito's Skyline Room. This is the last community event where the city council candidates are speaking altogether before the election on April 12th. The AAU and Chamber of Commerce forums are both available for rebroadcasts on Cerritos Cable TV3 while this event will be available via YouTube. Tonight's city council debate will be divided into four parts. Seating arrangement was predetermined by the candidates drawing numbers promptly at 6:15 PM before the beginning of this meeting. These are tonight's rules. Each candidate will be allowed to speak for one minute to answer each question. A countdown will be given with signage by our timekeeper, Jim Bolkolt, over here, and these placards will be flashed when you reach 30 seconds, 15 seconds, and then when your time's up. We ask all candidates to display decorum and do not speak until recognized by the moderator. No member shall use any language or gesture to wound, defend, or, I'm sorry, to wound, offend, or insult another member. Tonight's event will have four segments. The first part is a one-minute opening statement by each candidate upon being called by the moderator. The second part consists of four pre-prepared questions given to each candidate on March 13th, 2022, where the candidates were given a time limit of one minute per question. The second person will go first. The first person and the subsequent person will go next for the following question. The third part will be questions gathered from the audience and Zoom callers, pre-screened by a fellow committee of, I'm sorry, by a group of Neighborhood Watch captains to ensure there are no duplicate questions. The order for that segment will start at the third person, which would be Jennifer Hong, and move, again, clockwise order. The last segment will be the closing statements, and at that moment, we will be going counterclockwise, starting at Frank and then down the other direction towards Linda. So let's go ahead and proceed to the introduction statements. I'm going to go ahead and take my spot over there, and we'll start with Linda Johnson first. Hold on, let me take my section so we can begin time. Sorry. Okay. Go ahead.
Hi, good evening. I'm Linda Johnson. I'm a candidate for Cerrito City Council. First, I'd like to thank our Cerritos Neighborhood Watch captains for hosting tonight's events. I love Cerritos. I've been living here for 50 years since 1971. I'd like to say that I'm the only candidate that works in law enforcement. 20 years with the LA County District Attorney's Office, which gives me the perspective from the prosecutorial process, and now I am the Field Deputy to LA County Sheriff Alex Villanueva, who heads the largest sheriff's department in the world. Every day, I wear the bear. I work out of the Hall of Justice and sometimes next door out of the Cerrito Sheriff Station. But I'd like to take it a little further, and not just fund, fully fund law enforcement. We need to invest in our community and have a spending program that will secure resources for our neighbors and our residents to make sure that they are safe. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, you ready? The next candidate, Rocky Pavan.
The biggest driver of crime is dishonesty, corruption, and dirty politics. Tonight, I'll expose the truth. Last city council election, I was campaigning legally outside the Whitney High School gym, more than 100 feet away from the voting polls. Community Safety Manager Darrell Evans and Officer Cheam came out and told me that it was okay to campaign on the sidewalk, which is public property. The next day, Linda Johnson shows up, working as an employee for LA County Supervisor Janice Hahn, while at the same time Linda was supporting and campaigning for the other city council candidates running against me. Huge conflict of interest. Linda attempted to violate my First Amendment rights by calling the sheriff's station to have them come out and stop me from campaigning. I was right, Linda was wrong, in violation of interfering with the election process, wasting your taxpayers' money. Many Cerritos residents are questioning, if Linda's doing such a great job for LA County, then why is her former boss, LA County Supervisor Janice Hahn, not endorsing Linda for city council? But instead, her former county supervisor is endorsing Frank and Ernie for city council. Are Linda's work ethics really that bad not to get her own boss's endorsement and recommendation? Thank you very much.
Okay. Just, to Ryan, everybody, we do have rules for decorum. That wasn't, it was, it was fine to not get irate and follow the rules if, if there's any temptation. If we can go on to the next candidate, Jennifer Hong.
Hi, good evening, everyone. My name is Jennifer Hong. I would like, again, thank you, you know, Neighborhood Watch captains to host tonight's event. It's very important because I know everybody's concerned about safety as a priority subject for the city. I've been living in Cerrito since 1984 for 37 years, and have my two sons and my husband, and I raised two wonderful sons from Cerritos High School, graduated from Cerritos High School, and moved forward. As a businesswoman, I also located my business in the city of Cerritos, and the reason why I have my business in the city of Cerritos is also because of safety, you know? That's why I have my headquarters here. And I also involved with the Cerritos Public Services for 14 years, and I'm currently on the Parks and Recreation Commission and previously served on the Planning Commission as well and the Left and Right Committees. Having this experience will help me to run for the city. Thank you.
Thank you for your statement. Next candidate, Sam Desai.
Thank you, Northwest captains and guests for doing this forum and debate. I've been resident of Cerritos for over 20 years. I've been speaking at city council on behalf of residents for over the last five elections. Safety is important. It's not an illusion. We also need to be very practical and realize that we need funding for safety. You just cannot have a balanced budget and not have enough funding. So my task is to find that new funding so we can take care of safety. My campaign is about your safety and our lifestyle here, and it is about thinking about long-term, not just what's going to happen over the next few elections. So vote for me, ask me questions, and let me share with you the plans. Thank you.
Thank you. Next candidate, Patricia Murray.
Hello, and thank you for hosting this event. Thank you to everybody who participated. It's very important Neighborhood Watch and to be involved, and that's one reason why I'm running, because it's time to be involved in our community and take action and be responsible for our own safety. But once again, I'm Patricia Murray. I am a small business owner. I have been a resident of Cerritos for over 15 years, worked at Boeing Aerospace for over 30 years. I have a degree in international business. I'm the owner and operator of Patty's Wagon in Cerritos, and I am for bi-district elections. I'm for community engagement, and I'm also for change in our local government. Diversity is important, and being included is very important, and everybody should be represented, and I think it's time for a change because I have cultural riches to add to the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Next candidate, Ernie Nishii.
Thank you. Thanks to the moderators, Jennifer and Leah, for making this program possible. I mean, I think safety is the most important thing. As I've knocked on 3,500 doors to a person, they all say number one issue is safety. So to have a forum to be able to discuss that and be able to express those issues, I think, is, is good. Safety does not have to cost a lot of money. It's communication, it's education, and it's law enforcement. It's all those things together, and I think part of this forum will be able to talk about my program and making our community even safer than it currently is. I think we have a really wonderful city, and each of these candidates all have a different perspective on how to make our city even better and our city even safer, because we all know that that's the number one thing. If you don't have that, you have nothing. And so I'd like to give you the rest of the time to consider and think of all the facts that we'll have here tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. And the last to make opening statements, Frank Yokoyama.
Hi, I'm Cerritos Councilmember Frank Orello Yokoyama, and five years ago, I promised all of you that I will keep Cerritos safe. Please allow me to share you my track record, share with you my track record on keeping Cerritos safe these last five years because it will show you what I will do for you in the next four years. 81% reduction in Cerritos residential burglaries. Fully funded Cerrito Sheriff's Station and Sky Night Helicopter Patrol. I was the only councilmember who unconditionally supported full funding of school crossing guards. I was the only councilmember who consistently denounced racism and hate in Cerritos. I organized the Stop Asian Hate Rally in response to a violent attack on a senior husband and wife at Cerritos Regional Park. I brought 4,591 new LED streetlights to Cerritos so that criminals cannot hide in the shadows. I am endorsed by the Los Angeles County Deputy Probation Officers. Thank you.
Thank you. We will be moving on to the second segment, which will be the four prepared questions by the candidates. First candidate up is, I'm sorry, Rocky Pavan.
The first question?
Yeah, sorry. That's my cue. What do you feel is the largest driver of crime in Cerritos? How would you address it as a city councilmember, and how would you fund it?
I'll actually show it to you here. Jumped over our brick wall, smashed the sliding glass back door, broke into our home, and stole all of my wife's jewelry, including her wedding ring and some other valuables that her deceased father had given to her of sentimental value. I called the Cerrito Sheriff's Station at 3:03 PM. They did not show up until 4:55 PM, which is almost two hours later. I asked them why. I'm standing on the corner. Where are you? Why is it taking you so long? And they said that they were actually changing shifts. I was left wait-
I will work closely with law enforcement and politicians to pass legislations to convict criminals that need to go to jail. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments. Jennifer Hong, if you'd like to answer. Let me know if you need me to repeat the question. In order, in terms of time, I'm trying to move it along, so I'm not going to repeat it. It's also on the piece of paper that was given to you. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Anyway, I think the major thing is, what's the largest driver for, for the crime in Cerrito is because of Proposition AB 47 and AB 57, because that reduced the crime penalties, and that's affecting our city a lot. And, but, the city, we won't be cutting any budget for our city's sheriff's station because luckily, we have our sheriff's station, and our sheriff's station is funded by our own city. So it's very important that we keep our sheriff's station, and if the sheriff's station need more fund, we will give more fund if we need to have to. Okay? Thank you very much, and that's very important.
Okay, thank you. The next candidate, Sam Desai.
Thank you. So what is the largest driver of crime in Cerritos? As we have heard, law change, right? Laws are changing. And the second thing is no accountability, and this is not just for our deputies or our captain. It stands on the shoulder of our city manager. Buck stops there. How would we address it? One of the first things we do is strengthen Neighborhood Watch, give them the resources they need and they are asking for, and bring more awareness, because without Neighborhood Watch, the crime will continue. You are integral part of a solution. And how would I fund it? Because we do need funding for everything. Fact is, if you see, the funding happens, but we do need more funding. Just one additional police car is not going to do it. We need more funding, and we have to plan ahead. If we do not plan ahead, then these crimes will continue, and no one will take accountability, not the sitting council, not the future council. So the buck stops at our city management. Thank you.
Thank you. Next candidate, Patricia Murray.
We can speculate many things, but I think some of the drivers are economic hardship, uncertainty that was caused by the COVID pandemic, accountability. We really need to make safety a number one priority. I will review a response time to the police. We have a contract with the LA County Sheriff's Department to police our city, and I will review response time to make sure that we're getting what we paid for in this city. I also think that we have to take ownership and be more responsible for our own safety as well as citizens, and that's why I've decided to get more involved. We have the Neighborhood Watch, we have the Cerrito Safety Commission, and we need to collaborate with them. We need to collaborate with our local cities, and that's what it starts with, just talking and collaborating and seeing what we can do ourselves, not just the police, because if they defund the police, then what are we going to do? So we have to take ownership and be involved in our own safety. Thank you.
Time, thank you. Next candidate, Ernie Nishii.
Thank you. The biggest driver of crime in our community is actually our own wealth. They want what we have. Most of the crime comes from people out of our city that comes and steals from us here. We have five cars, 65 deputies. We have the officers, we have the people. What we need is education amongst our own residents. Neighborhood Watch is key in part of that. I talked to Darrell Evans, the safety person, and he said, you know, they have a budgeted position to have a non-swarm person to go to each of the residents and say, this is what the bad guys are looking for. Let's talk about how to prevent the crime, make us a harder target, so that way the people outside of our community don't go and get us. I also thought of misdemeanors and how we can go after that, but according to the sheriff, they can't go after that, but we can go after them civilly, and that might be another way to make sure that there is some penalty for committing crime against those people who are organized, right? The penalty is you have to go through a procedure. We will make a determination, not jail, determinations.
Thank you. Frank Yokoyama.
Good answer, Ernie. The largest driver of crime in Cerritos is the prosperity of Cerritos residents and Cerritos businesses. Cerritos is a very prosperous city, which attracts the criminal element. 19% of all crime in the city happens in our Los Cerritos Center Plaza 183 shopping districts area. Over 30,000 to 35,000 people visit these shopping districts on an average weekend. So we, the city of Cerritos responds to that by having a full-time deputy and two part-time deputies working in those shopping districts, doing high-visibility patrols. The full-time deputy meets with the loss prevention officers hired by the businesses and the security officers hired by the mall, and they also do saturation patrols, where the six radio cars equipped with ALPR cameras are consistently driving around these shopping districts. Thank you.
Thank you. Linda Johnson.
Thank you. I'm going to agree with Ernie and with Frank. Obviously, they too, along with me, spoke to our public safety manager, and that is the answer. We're a city of prosperity, and there's opportunities for criminals as well. You know, we have, Cerritos is a home to a vibrant shopping center, beautiful homes, and prosperous residents, and with that, it brings in crime elements. They come in, they commit their crimes, and then they come, and there's no accountability for it because of the policies of the new district attorney for not prosecuting these crimes. But what can we do as a city? I will always fund law enforcement. It will not ever be on the chopping block as long as I sit on the council. Thank you. And I will always fund our Sky Night Helicopter Program, which I've had an opportunity to ride in, and safety on the ground as well for our patrol deputies, making sure that contractual obligations are met by the sheriff's department. Thank you.
Thank you. The second question is, do you believe recent legislation has caused crime issues? If so, how can the city resolve these legislative threats to public safety? If not, discuss what you think will continue to keep the community safe. Rocky? Go ahead.
I think it's the third person.
All right. I have another video for you.
Is it supposed to be Rocky?
Yeah, it's round robin. It's the third person.
No, for the-
It'll be her.
For the next segment. That's when we start.
What's that?
Sorry.
Want me to do it or no?
Yeah. Yeah, no, he gets to start over because we're asking-
For four, four questions in a row, Rocky goes first, and Linda goes last.
So for this section, yes.
Didn't I go first last time?
Uh-
Didn't I go first last time?
So for this section, each of the four questions, Rocky starts first-
That's not fair.
So the next section. I'm going to adjust. Hold on. So we're going to go ahead and have Jennifer Hong go next, and do you need me to read off the question again, or are we good?
Oh, I'm good. As long as the audience are all clear about the questions. Yes, I firmly believe the recent legislature, the legislation has caused this kind of issue, the crime issues. As I mentioned, you know, and when I was answering the number one question, the AB 47 and AB 57, which is really hurting from the state legislation, is a fact to our local situation. I know we are a rich and very prosperous city. However, without reducing the penalty, that's what caused most of the problem. So I think the thing is, we have to protect our own city, we have to do our sheriff's station through our Neighborhood Watch, which is most important. We have to work together to, to, against the crime rate to increase. Thank you.
Thank you. The next person, Sam Desai.
Thank you. Do I believe that legislation have caused crime issues? Absolutely. And the second question was, how can city resolve these legislative threats? Well, first of all, we get to be strong enough to think independently and not have anyone on council with conflict of interest. It's a very serious subject. We cannot have someone on council whose bosses are in charge of our security. We are capable of funding our own sub-sheriff station, capable of engaging residents to take action, and we do have new creative solutions using technology as well as awareness through Neighborhood Watch. So legislative, I say we stand on our own, and we take care of our own security, and we do not sell out. It is absolutely important for everyone to understand. We cannot afford to sell out. It's a question of next five years, next 10 years, and we can do this. Thank you.
Thank you. Next candidate, Patricia Murray.
I believe some, some crimes going on currently are crimes of opportunity because of Prop 57 and early release to the inmates, but crime never left Cerritos or any other city. It was slowed down due to COVID, people inside, but it never left, and we still need to be proactive in our getting cameras, encouraging our neighbors to get cameras, encouraging our neighbors to get involved in Neighborhood Watch. We have resources right here in our community, they're right here in the audience, sacrificing and volunteering their time, and we also, if we can install citywide more cameras citywide, I would advocate for that as well. But once again, we need to be involved in our own city protection and just be involved in the community. More community engagement is very important in our safety. Thank you.
Thank you. Next candidate, Ernie Nishii.
Short answer is yes, it has affected crime. Unfortunately, there's an unintended circumstance to making these things less. They can't have diversion, and that's part of the cause of a lot of crime, right? They need to feed a habit, and we don't have the tools. The judges don't have the tools to actually do this. How do we address it as a city councilperson? Well, we're not a state legislature, but we can talk to them. We have influence. We can tell them our experiences of what crime is in our city, how these laws directly affect the residents of our city. I'm not talking about political things that we do, but I'm talking about talking to the legislators directly. We should have cameras because those are good ways of actually seeing what the issues are and actually having evidence to go forward and addressing crime. So I think, yes, it does affect it, and yes, education, additional resources, and things like that will help us address the crime. Thank you.
Thank you. Frank Yokoyama.
More significant than the recent legislation is the, the fact that the current district attorney's filing practices are causing frustration because his office is not filing criminal prosecutions on non-violent misdemeanor crimes. So council members can work with our Board of Supervisors and our state legislature because they control the funding from our, from the county and the state for our public safety. We need to provide feedback to our county supervisors and to our state legislature from our city, so the supervisors and our state legislatures can know, they can know what is working in Cerritos and what is not working in Cerritos. I'm blessed to have been working with our county supervisor, Janice Hahn, for five years now, as well as the other supervisors in my capacity on the Southern California Association of Governments, and I will let them know what's working and what's not
Thank you for your answers. Next question-
We're not done.
I'm sorry. I have to go. I'm sorry. Linda Johnson is next.
Yes, a simple answer to that is yes. As a paralegal, I worked closely on Prop 47 cases where I had to reduce, re-sentencing cases, reducing felonies to misdemeanors. It was just ridiculous to see that cases of this went back 20 years. I have the experience from a prosecutorial view that this is not what we want in Cerritos. I'm the only candidate here that has developed relationships with city managers and council members in the region, and Cerritos needs to address these issues that, with failed legislation, that has impacted our public safety. But aside from working with our legislators, as a city, we need to pass legislation and ordinance that is tough on crime, making it illegal to possess a stolen catalytic converter. Or even with that, as a city, look into the possibility of having our own city prosecutor. If the district attorney's office will not prosecute these cases, the city of Cerritos should have an attorney that will do just that. So, crime? Thank you.
Next candidate, Rocky Pavan.
I agree with her being this mindset. A lady sinked her vehicle in 2021. My daughter gets into her vehicle and starts to drive- ...way, and it sounds kind of funny, in not-working property, so she gets out of her vehicle only to find out that some criminal decided to saw off her catalytic converter. Shame on you criminals.
I will work closely with law enforcement and politicians to pass legislation to convict criminals. Do the crime, then do the time. I'm sick and tired of crime in our neighborhoods. That's why I'm running for Cerrito City Council. Vote Rocky Pavan, and I will fight for your safety. Thank you very much.
Thank you. The next question is question number three. Law enforcement budget cuts are expected to reduce the number of deputies in the county. What impact do you think this will have on Cerritos, and what will you do as a council member in response to the budget cuts as it relates to our sheriff's substation? First person who will answer is Sam Desai.
Thank you. It's sad that budget cuts are coming. So what impact do you think will have on our city? Major impact. It's going to change how we look at security over the next two years, over the next five years. And what would I do in, as a response? Well, first of all, we have to understand there is no budget cuts for sheriff's station. We have enough money, we have enough support in the council, we know how important sheriff's substation is, strengthening it. My job is to find new revenues. My job is to find new revenues. We do need to find new revenues to increase our safety, and we do have assets. So working with city manager is important, understanding that this is just not for next three months. It's next two years, next five years, next 10 years, and we have to be extremely careful how proactive we are. And we get to be proactive now. Thank you.
Thank you. Next candidate, Patricia Murray.
Our city is very attractive to crime. I would advocate to maintain our current contract and make sure that we are getting the services that we pay for. I can't stress enough to be more involved. We need to be visible in our involvement in our own city. I mean, it would have a great impact if they cut police, but like Sam said, we do have a thriving budget to keep that in place, but I'm committed to being more involved by being here now. I'm showing my commitment to, I'm committed. And I just really encourage people to just be involved in your own safety. We have to go back to basics, like we teach our kids, be aware of your surroundings and know your neighbor. I make it a point to know my neighbor.
Thank you. Next candidate, Ernie Nishii.
Hi. So that's a great question. You know, I'm not an expert. I just started the Neighborhood Watch in my area. I talked to the experts, and Daryl Evans basically said that even if they don't have the same funding, so long as we have the same funding, they have to supply us with the deputies that we contract for. It's basically a contract. There may be a little shortages in some areas, but essentially, we will have those services. So in terms of what the city council can do, we can not reduce that budget. We can keep our sheriff's station, we can keep the Sky Night, we can keep communicating and filling in positions that we have, the civilian positions that are also effective in terms of keeping us safe. It's not all sworn, we have 65 sworn, we have 19 unsworn. We can use those other resources to also reduce crime. It's not just one aspect, it's the whole thing. And so, not having that, it is a contract. We are not going to have less sheriff. We will have the same. Might cost us a little more, but we'll have the same. Thank you.
Thank you. Next person is Frank Yokayama.
For five years, I voted to fully fund the Cerrito Sheriff's Station, the Sky Night Helicopter Patrol, school crossing guards, Neighborhood Watch, Volunteers on Patrol, and our Community Emergency Response Team Program. A reduction in funding at the county level absolutely will not reduce the number of deputies in Cerritos. The city of Cerritos contracts with the LA County Sheriff's Department for our service level of deputies. So as long as I am on the city council, I will continue to fully fund our Cerrito Sheriff's Station and the necessary level of deputies to keep Cerritos safe. And that's what I've been doing for five years, and I promise you, I promise you, I will continue to keep Cerritos safe.
Thank you. Next candidate, Linda Johnson.
Yes, budget cuts are not coming, they're already here. Currently, all 22 sheriff stations are facing staffing issues. Yes, Cerritos does pay for their contract to get the minutes that they requested, but as a department, for the sheriff's department, if they're not able to get the bodies that they need, they're not going to meet those contractual obligations. For instance, the CEO just denied the sheriff's station three academy classes. What does that mean? We have sheriffs that are retiring, we can't even backfill in our new deputies to those that are retiring or going out through attrition. But I've worked with the board of supervisors, I know their county budget, I know there's a surplus of funds. We need to lobby our board of supervisors to testify against the board and let them know they need to fully fund our sheriff's department. It will impact all our contract cities, no matter if we have those contracts. If you don't have the bodies, the department's not going to be able to meet those contractual obligations.
Thank you. Next candidate, Rocky Pavon.
Okay. My name is Rocky Pavon, and I'm the only Cerrito City Council candidate who has been licensed in both of the financial industries since 1994. I have 28 years of financial management experience in investments, insurance, to help each one of you, my fellow Cerritos residents, and the city of Cerritos balance the budget, increasing the necessary cash flow to improve our safety, fix our streets, which is also a safety concern, sidewalks, streets, and buildings. Budget cuts will have a huge impact on your safety. I am 100% for funding the Cerrito Sheriff's Station, Sky Night Helicopter, Community Safety Department. I will not cut anyone from our safety division. Also, I will fund and implement my new advanced high-tech safety system all over the city of Cerritos, which will reduce crime of up to 50% or more. Utilizing artificial intelligence, we will be able to identify and catch criminal suspects in our neighborhoods before they commit more crimes. Vote Rocky Pavon, and I will fight for your safety. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next candidate, Jennifer Hong.
Yes, the law enforcement already cut our budget. However, if I got elected, or if I have a chance to talk to the county supervisor, I would tell them what my suggestion and tell them not to cut back the budget. Also, like we were to all know about, the sheriff's station for Cerritos, luckily, we are funded by our own city. And our city, we know how important the security is, the top priority is our safety. We all know that. During my door knocking, I've noticed and I've heard a lot of residents, they are all concerned about safety. So I think luckily, we have our own budget, and we have to keep our sheriff's station going and also keep on funding the sheriff's station and have the high-tech knowledge and information, and also help whatever we can have to the prevention proactive for the crime, you know, to reduce the crime. We have to be proactive. Thank you.
Thank you. The last question is, what role do you feel citizens, volunteers, and Neighborhood Watch play in the community safety picture? And how would you support these initiatives as a city council member? First person to answer is Patricia Murray, please.
The citizens, the volunteers, the Neighborhood Watch, it's the heartbeat of the city. I say it all the time, they're a necessary asset to the city. I think the volunteers need more recognition. They play a huge part, and, I mean, they sacrifice their time, and we need to recognize them more. I don't know if the city can do a luncheon, annual luncheon, or award ceremony, parade, they need to do something, because you guys are very appreciated, and they're community leaders. They lead by example, and we need their services, much needed. So I appreciate the Neighborhood Watch and the volunteers, and thank you for your service.
Thank you. Next person, Ernie Nishii.
So, we're all part of Neighborhood Watch. We are all interested in having a safe city, so I don't see why it's just the captains or just a few people here and there. It needs to be all of us, actually. We have water bills, we can all be part of the email that goes out to all the residents. It's communication, it's the CRT, it's the captains, it's all elements of it, including the schools. We can go into the schools and talk to them how to prevent crime. Neighborhood Watch, just like you said, is the key to making our city safe, along with law enforcement working together. Those are the ways we can make our community safe, not just for safety in terms of crime, but also knowing each other. In an emergency, do you know who your neighbor is? Do you know that this person has a wheelchair, or that person can't get out there, or they need medication? That's all part of what Neighborhood Watch is. It's not just the safety part, but it's also being a community, working with police. We can make a better Cerritos. I know we can do that together.
Thank you. Next person, Frank Yokayama.
The city of Cerritos funds Neighborhood Watch, the Neighborhood Watch program, the Volunteers on Patrol program, the Community Emergency Response Team program, school crossing guards. This shows the city of Cerritos' public safety strategy, because we must recognize that public safety is multifaceted. It's fighting crime, it's crossing guards, it's the Sky Night Helicopter, the Eyes in the Sky, it's commercial truck enforcement, it's traffic accidents. The city council provides public safety by supporting and funding all of these components of our multifaceted public safety strategy. Thank you.
Thank you. Next candidate, Linda Johnson.
Yes, I agree with all the candidates up here. Neighborhood Watch is vital to the city, and as a council member, I'll support any initiative that would fund Neighborhood Watch, public outreach, and community public events to promote the program and to train block captains. I'm the only candidate here that has been out with our LA County Sheriff's homeless outreach teams. I have joined them and been in the riverbeds identifying and addressing homeless encampments. These are areas that Neighborhood Watch does not normally interact with, but it certainly is a public safety, as it is intruding on public space. Residents recreate along the riverbed, whether they ride their bike or they run. We need to protect public space, and when it comes to the LASD host team, I'll make sure that they patrol our city, the city of Cerritos. Thank you.
Thank you. Next candidate, Rocky Pavon.
Actually, something you don't know about me is I actually worked for Los Angeles County Homeless Division for many years, and Cerrito citizens, volunteers, and Neighborhood Watch play a very important role in our community safety. We should all know our neighbors, look out for each other, and be vigilant. Know who belongs in your neighborhood and do who doesn't. If you see something, say something. After my home was burglarized, I was so upset, I volunteered to be a Neighborhood Watch captain fighting crime. During the last city council election, two years ago, my mother and I noticed a suspicious man walking down Bloomfield with a backpack. Immediately, I called the Cerrito Sheriff's Station and continued to follow the suspect until the deputies arrived within about five minutes. The deputies arrested the man, finding drugs and paraphernalia in his backpack. My mother and I helped arrest a criminal walking our streets of Cerritos. That was a great use of taxpayers' money. Who would you rather vote for, career politicians trying to get elected, or good law-abiding citizens like my mother and I who help catch criminals? I am making Cerritos a safer place to live, raise our children, work, and retire. Vote Rocky Pavon for a safer Cerritos. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you. Next candidate, Jennifer Hong.
Okay, I feel all the citizens have to participate on the safety issue. During my walk-in precinct, I feel so happy, because I realized, I noticed a lot of neighbors knowing each other. They started knowing each other. Back to the old time that we know, hey, who's living next to you, and, you know, if they're out there, they're taking care of each other. And that's very important. That's what citizens should participate, this way, knowing your neighborhood, and you see, say something when you see something, okay? You see something, say something. That's very important. Call the police station when you see something is wrong. And also, the volunteers are very, very appreciated, because they contribute a lot of the time, they contribute a lot of the time. We also have volunteers on the patrol program. When you are out of city or out of the house for a while, they will come over and patrol your house, make sure your house is not broken into the window and door, everything. Neighborhood Watch is most important, and I'm the block captain, too. Thank you.
Thank you. Next candidate is Sam Desai.
Thank you. I see Neighborhood Watch as my eyes and ears. I'm a resident, I'm a father, I'm a family member. You guys do keep us safe. You make time, and you volunteer. So how can I support you more than sharing with you that I'm with you? I represent you, and I know that sitting over here in past, many candidates have made promises but have not been able to deliver. Solution is in front of us. Give the tools that Neighborhood Watch captains and volunteers have been asking for. I know it's going to cost just about $250,000 a year. I need your support, and reach out to the council. Little bit more funding in Neighborhood Watch will give us safety and security 10 times beyond what one additional or two additional police cars will give us. Initiatives are being taken by Neighborhood Watch captains. Council cannot ignore them and just speak about them during elections. Thank you.
Thank you. Hold on, for the next section, I need to get organized for a second, hold on.
Is the next section kind of a free-for-all, or?
No, the next section is for, it's questions from the audience and Zoom audience, so audience that came to here today, and also questions that were fielded from Zoom. So they were written down, and I have an order I'm supposed to go to, but I need to figure out logistics for a hot second, hold on for a second. That's one, two, here. I'm gonna go this.
I'm gonna ask for a point of order here, Ms. Palapo. I'd like to request the candidate sitting next to me on my left to not post photos online of me, please.
Again, we have rules of the quorum.
It's during-
We have, I'm sorry, we have rules of the quorum that were provided at the beginning of this forum. There's no, there's no response that can be given. Yes, I'm trying to read the next question. Please do not disrupt the forum again. Okay, so this is the Neighborhood Watch question segment, where questions were given by people in the audience on Zoom and here who attended. First question is actually a statement, and then it follows into the question. So it says, "Good evening, Neighborhood Watch block captains and Cerritos council candidates." "Good evening, Neighborhood Watch block captains and Cerrito City Council candidates. My name is Addison Beach, and I have been a resident for almost 10 years. I have noticed an increase in the homeless population in our city. Oftentimes, it makes me concerned for my safety. I would like to know what you have done or will do to improve the homeless situation in our city. Thank you for your time." First candidate will be Ernie.
Can I get to it? Yeah. All right, I volunteer to go first. Homelessness, that's a very difficult issue. There's the long-term homeless and the short-term homeless. The short-term homeless, I actually ran a program to get people back into their homes, where they were couch surfing, they had income, and they were able to get back into a home, or they were, you know, the major medical issue came and they had a huge expense, and so I was able to run a program. Very hard, because nobody wants to admit that they're about to become homeless, or they are homeless. So that part, I have a solution. The other part, the long-term homeless, I do not. It's a regional issue, includes mental health issues, includes wraparound. I know one thing that's not going to be part of it, you can't build those houses at $700,000 a unit. It's just unreal. We can't do it that way. We have to be more creative. No taxpayer is going to want to pay $700,000 per homeless unit. So I'd love to tell you, Addison, that I have an answer. You know, there is law enforcement, there is mental health services, it's regional.
Thank you. Next candidate is Frank Yokayama.
The homeless issue is important to our residents. I do need to point out, though, in 2020, Cerritos had 46 homeless count in comparison to Downey, which had 258, Norwalk had 168, and Lakewood had 77. However, the Cerrito City Council has been addressing the homelessness as part- However, the Cerrito City Council has been addressing the homelessness as part because we are part of the Gateway Council of Governments and we are participating in the Homeless Action Plan and updates to that plan. So we're working together with our neighboring cities. I'm working together with our neighboring cities in the Gateway COG. And that's how we are addressing homeless together with our neighboring cities.
Thank you. Next candidate is Linda Johnson.
Thank you, Addison, for the question. So I am the only candidate that has been in our riverbeds with our Los Angeles County Homeless Outreach Services Team, addressing homelessness and also regulating public space on those and the encampments. I'm also the only candidate up here that has developed relationships with all the city managers and council members in the Gateway region. Why that's important is because we need to work collaboratively as a region to address homelessness. It's a regional issue, but together, we need to work on issues such as perhaps reopening our mental health state facilities. Obviously, folks that are homeless and living in these encampments are facing mental health issues. That's not a choice, but that is an issue that they're facing and they need to be provided the resources and the treatments so that they can get off the streets and get into permanent supportive housing so that they can lead a better life. Thank you.
Thank you. Next candidate is Rocky Pavon.
Actually, I'm the only city council candidate who actually worked on a daily basis, one-on-one with the homeless. Coming in, I worked for the Los Angeles County Department of Public Social Services in Rancho Dominguez next to Compton. And there, as an eligibility worker, I would help the homeless be able to find a place to stay, be able to get their food stamps, and also refer them to different mental health issues. Currently, right now, I am a member of CCN through Celico Workforce Investment Board, which we actually get together every month and talk about individuals who have possible mental health issues or they're homeless or to find them housing. I have the connections, I have the resources to be able to help the city of Cerritos not worry about the homeless problem. Vote for Rocky Pavon to improve your safety. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next candidate, Jennifer Hung.
I've noticed the residents are very concerned about the homeless issues. And most of the homeless people are coming from the riverbed. We have to admit that. And I've talked to the Cerritos Sheriff's Department and they were saying that they're trying, trying to send them back to the shelters, the closest one, you know? Because we're treating them very nicely. We don't want to insult them. We all know they are, they're having a tough time. So we're sending back to their shelters, but however, they always come back because of Cerrito is a nicer city. So this is a very, very major issue. I think this also come from the, they have the mental health, they need counseling, so, and they need food. So I think cities should think about how we're going to prevent this. It's going to get more and more serious, and I think we have to face it and then find a better solution about this in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Next person, Sam Desai.
Thank you. Addison, that's a deep question. At your age, I know it's difficult when you're afraid. What would I do? I would send you a message of kindness, compassion. And then I would ask you to see what our city has been planning. Since 2014, you were perhaps two years old. We have plans and we have been acting on identifying individuals who need help and we transport them to the nearest, safest place. Now, we continuously get to understand that homelessness is an issue. And when you find yourself in an unsafe situation, we all feel it and we are responding to it as soon as we can. As a councilperson, I can assure you that with time, we will improve how we communicate. And I understand there is mental health, there is doubt on luck. But please know that we are looking into it. Thank you.
Thank you. Next person, Patricia Murray.
The homeless situation is a very sensitive subject. It's a tough subject. I live on the west side of Cerritos, near Liberty Park, so I see it as very visible. The homeless are free to roam. But if they commit a crime, they should be treated like any other citizen, relocated. If they need mental health services, they need to get that. We do have a contract with the Sheriff's Department to police our cities. We need to review what they're doing about it, what the current council people are doing about it. We also have to also get more involved and give ideas. Help our council, help our safety committees, and give them suggestions on what they can do and what we can do as a community. Because it's not just on their backs, it's about us helping too. But it should be no loitering, there should be no sleeping on park benches, no sleeping on the sidewalks. If you get my attention, I will say something.
So do you think we could spend a little bit more than seven minutes on a really critical issue like homelessness? Because it seems like that is, you know, we can't solve homelessness in seven minutes, I don't think. I mean, you know, like if we found a way to benchmark a successful program, that might be something. Are we going to have a continued dialogue or are we just going to go to the next one?
We're going to the next question, yeah, because.
Okay.
Yeah.
It just seems like homelessness is a critical issue that can't be solved in a one-minute blur. I can solve homelessness. That's not, I mean, there are millions and millions of people spending millions and millions of dollars trying to figure it out in LA. They haven't solved, I'm sorry.
We can have another forum for that.
But, I mean, seriously, though, I mean, that's a program that we should talk about.
Yeah.
I got it. All right. Let's go to the next question.
All right, thank you. The next question, "With recent shooting gang-like activity at Cerritos High School..." Sorry, let me repeat that because that was a wait. "With recent shooting gang-like activity at Cerritos High School, many of us are concerned about what has been generally a safe, non-confrontational school district in most areas. What are your thoughts on this and your recommendations, Steven Sherman, MD, resident of Cerritos?"
Jennifer, I'm sorry, can you repeat the question?
Sure. "With recent shooting and gun-like activity at Cerritos High School, many of us are concerned about what has been generally a safe, non-confrontational school district in most areas. What are your thoughts on this and your recommendation?"
I didn't even, what can be considered, I'm sorry, what is that?
It just says, "What are your thoughts on this and recommendations?" That's it. So, first candidate is Frank Yokiyama. I'm sorry, Frank Yokiyama.
Yes, I do need to correct that. There was not a shooting at Cerritos High School. So let's all correct that. There was a shooting at Heritage Park. And it is the city of Cerritos's responsibility to provide safety to our residents and visitors on city property. That's why it's our responsibility, for example, to provide school crossing guards so that our kids and their families can get back and forth to school safely on city property like sidewalk, city sidewalks, city streets, city crosswalks. It's the school district's responsibility to provide safety on school property. But the city of Cerritos should work together in collaboration with our school district and our superintendent and our school board members, like Ernie Nishi, to keep everybody safe within the city and our school district. For example, our Cerrito Sheriff's Station collaborates with the school district to do active shooter training every year.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next person is Linda Johnson.
So I attended the school board special meeting yesterday and obviously, there is a lot of concern from parents and community members regarding the recent incidents over at Cerritos High School. I also had the opportunity to speak to Captain Mindin and he has been working closely with the school district and has deployed extra deputies just to address the recent incidents at Cerritos High School. It's really important that we work closely with our school district. Cerritos High School serves as a homeschool for many Cerritos residents and Cerritos residents come into this city knowing that Cerritos High School is a safe place and a safe environment for the education of their children. I would like to urge our school district, though, to work closely with our parents and to provide the communication and the information that they need as soon as possible. Thank you.
Thank you. The next person is Rocky Pavon.
First of all, I want to say that I do believe in having gun rights to protect our families, especially from criminals that are roaming our neighborhoods at night. However, parents also need to have a responsibility to make sure that those guns and weapons are actually locked up when not being used and not accessible to the youth when unsupervised. So I feel like that is very, very important to make sure. I don't know how they've got the guns or where the guns actually came from, but we need to make sure that if we are gun owners to lock them up. Second of all, I actually grew up as a child on the west side of Long Beach. So I was used to actually hearing gunshots at night or gangs and the, you know, different cultures and races and that sort of thing. So it's nothing of news to me, but I do not want to see that in Cerritos. I do want to make sure our students have the mental health and behavioral, that if they got issues, they got problems, let's talk it out. Let's make sure they're seeing the counselors necessary to be able to make sure that they're not going to pull the trigger. So I think it's very important to protect our students, very important. Thank you very much.
The next person is Jennifer Hung.
Well, first of all, I feel very sad, you know, to hear about this news. I was shocked and all the parents are panicked at the same time. I think this is a major issue. I think it started from the home. You know, of course, the gun control is very important. You know, we have to prevent the access for all the young kids, first of all. But secondly, we also, I think the parents have to pay more attention with all the kids when they are at home because the Facebook and a lot of too much time they're spending on those kind of social media and they started bullying each other or bullying somebody. And that's how it create all the hate and everything. And I also think the school has to have a more sensor to detect, you know, the backpack. And they have to open more access. The city and the school board and the Sheriff's Department should all work together in order to keep our schools safe because the students know that it's not only one day to increase deputies, deputies, because we need a safety in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. The next candidate is Sam Desai.
Thank you. Heritage Park shooting, what did it teach us? Well, if you look around this room, you have five elected officials from Dairy Valley area, Artesia, Cerritos, council, as well as Unified School District Board members. They haven't figured it out. Why? Our children, our safety, our policies, something is stopping them from coming up with a solution. How much time do you need? The question goes back to us and council when we win. What is urgency and what is communication? We get to communicate and we get to resolve these issues. Just by talking that ABC Unified School District and council will talk to each other and solve the problem? It's not going to happen. Just look in this room. We do need accountability and we need council people who are serious about our safety. They may be in law enforcement, but they are useless right now.
Thank you. The next candidate is Patricia Murray.
My opinion, safety starts at home. Parents need to pay more attention to their children and what they're doing and what they're taking to school. Be more involved at home. There's just guns didn't appear, you know, out of nowhere. We, the school board can only do so much. Their parents as well. Nobody wanted that. I'm glad it wasn't anything fatal. But we have to really communicate, we have to create more awareness and just be aware of our surroundings. If our children say, see something, they need to also say something and just participate, like I said, in our own safety, our own community's safety because we are a community and we have to work together because we can't just put it on our school boards. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, I'd like to go next. This is a good one. So I think that Frank and Patricia and Linda both have great, all three of them have good answers because it is a partnership. It is, schools cannot do it by themselves. We need the city collaboration, more communication between the schools and the city of working together. We've had two years of COVID. They've been at home. They have, these things have been happening at school districts across the country. Violence is up, suicide is up. All of these things are part of a general thing. Is guns the cause? I think they're actually the symptom of the situation. The cause is the separation. We need mental health supports in all of our schools. I tried to do a motion to actually get that going right away. Looking at our shooter drills, we need to look at those again because in light of what happened in March, we got to look at those new ways of doing things. So I asked for a motion for that. We need to think of things in a different way because life has changed since COVID, whether we like it or not. And we need to have these partnerships. We need to think outside the box, working together.
Thank you. Okay. The next question is a statement followed by the question. "Several places in town have overgrown trees with large limbs falling off in storms or root destroying sidewalks and streets. These are safety hazards. What will you do to remediate these?" First person is Patricia Murray.
No, that's not right.
I think it's me, right?
Frank. Oh, sorry, you're right.
I think Linda's volunteering.
It's Linda.
I'm not volunteering.
It's Linda. I'm sorry, this thing wasn't updated yet. Thank you.
Is that correct?
Hold on.
Would you like to go next?
Yeah, because Frank went for the second question. So the third question is Linda, back to you.
Okay, so this is a question regarding our streets, our trees, and our sidewalks, correct?
Yes.
Okay. So as I've been walking, precinct walking, I've encountered many of our sidewalks are damaged and overgrown trees and even seen our streets. Our streets haven't been slurred in so many years and it certainly is an issue that needs to be addressed. But what I'd like to do, if I get on council, is to commission a strategic plan, a five-year plan to address these issues. We need a plan that will restore our streets, that will allow our residents to cut down those nuisance trees and also to fix our sidewalks. On top of that, I'd also like to propose a tree grant program that will help our residents address those nuisance trees. Waiting for the city to come out and cut those trees is, it's taking too long and it's a dangerous situation where trees can fall on cars or even on a person.
Thank you. The next candidate is Rocky Pavon.
Yes, definitely. This actually is one of the issues that I absolutely hate walking the streets, seeing all those old pine trees just messing up the sidewalks and tearing them up in the streets. And I can't stand it. I don't know how the city of Cerritos residents can actually stand it. I can't stand it. I want to, and there's so many excuses. People get elected on city council, they keep saying they're going to do it, but they don't do it. And I believe in get in, get the job done, and get out. Stop with the term, you know, I believe we can get this done in four years, one term. I can get the trees cut down and we can get the sidewalks repaired. And we're going to not, and we don't have enough staff or employees here in the city of Cerritos. We need to contract out. We need to start contracting out. I also have a reforestation program that I also want to launch. Some things, ideas that I want to be able to make sure that that job gets done. Enough is enough. Vote Rocky Pavon. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next candidate is Jennifer Hung.
Yes, this is a very serious issue because every time I do door knocking, everybody say complaints, complaining about the same thing. And why are we keep on hearing about the same thing? And they're saying like, well, what is your platform? You always, you guys all talk about the same thing over and over again. Every year, every election, all the candidates talks about the same problem, same issues. But you know what? It takes to put the right budget into it in order to. It takes to put the right budget into it in order to trim more trees and everything. We know we're proud of as a tree city, but when the overgrown trees are damaging our life, our safety, and damaging the side curve, we should fix it, and we should put it as one of our top priority. And how are we going to fix it? Budgeting, instead of trimming certain trees, we have to be more aggressive to trim all the trees. We have to put more budget to fix all the sidewalks. That's very important. And that is also how we're going to contract, we have to find the right contract to reduce the cost. And that's my proposal. Thank you.
Thank you. Next candidate, Sam Desai.
Thank you. I met city manager last week. I spoke to our budget manager last week. I understood their priorities, and I want everyone to know, we are not their priority. Fixing the trees is not their priorities, and do you know why? The sitting council is a little bit preoccupied in doing whatever they want to do and forget the promises they made. Money is there, plans are there. Residents have actually gone to city hall and give specific solutions, and sitting council have ignored them. Resident advisory committee is one of the recommendations I bring to the table. It's about time we understand urgency is important. I cannot afford one of you to go out for a walk and fall down. Maybe our manager and our council thinks you are just a number. You are not. It's all interconnected.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next candidate, Patricia Murray.
I think the city need to be more transparent and our forestry concerns, if it's not a priority to trim, to remove the trees, they should just be transparent about it and not have the residents think that they're going to remove the trees. I've been a resident for over 15 years, and they trim the trees all the time, but I don't see many trees being removed. The neighbors complain, they say it's like an act of congress to get a tree removed. Their plumbing has been affected. I see the sidewalks lifted myself, and I think that they should do something about it and not just keep misleading the residents. They say Cerritos is beautiful, we have trees, make it look that way. You know, the residents shouldn't have to threaten to sue to get some action. And we need to be more proactive in addressing our citizens' needs, and if it's the tree removal, they need to oil that squeaky wheel and just take care of that resident.
Thank you. Next candidate, Ernie Nishi.
Yes, so my wife's in a wheelchair. I definitely feel the issue of not being able to go down the street that we want to go down, because the sidewalk is cracked. We need to address these issues. We are a 50-year city, those trees have grown from little things to big things, and I think we need to address them. Sam's right, we have the money, we have $100 million out in there that we can actually deal with. We could actually not earn a lot and still be able to deal with this tree issue. But is it just, we want to be a tree city still, I think, I mean, we don't want to be like La Palma where there's no trees at all and it looks like a desert. I think we need to have a little bit of balance, we need to have, give the residents a choice or a chance to say, hey, is this an issue of safety? Is it an issue of liability? Is it an issue of access? After you determine those things, is it an issue of what the resident wants? I think those are the four things that we need to consider. Liability, access, safety, and what the resident wants. Thank you.
Thank you. Last person, Frank Yokiyama.
Five years ago, I promised the residents that I will keep Cerritos safe and I will keep Cerritos clean. And when I was elected in April of 2017, when the first budget process came up in June of 2017, the city staff proposed in the budget presented to us to provide for that fiscal year $450,000 to trim trees and remove trees. That wasn't enough, I knew that wasn't enough. So I and my council colleague, Mark Polito, made the motion and seconded increasing it in June of 2017 from $450,000 to $950,000. We increased it by $500,000 for that fiscal year 2017, 2018. And it passed, and increasing the budget by half a million dollars to remove trees and trim trees got us back on the four-year cycle. That's what I will continue to do. Thanks.
Thank you. We're now moving on to the fourth segment of our candidate forum. Each of you are now allowed to make your closing statement, starting counterclockwise once called upon. Frank Yokiyama, you will be going first.
Did you say this is the closing statements?
Yes.
Yes.
Go ahead, yeah.
So I just wanted to wrap up. In the five years I've been on the city council, 29,500 trees have been trimmed, 450 trees removed. I'm proud of my track record of keeping Cerritos safe. My track record will show you what I will continue to do if you vote for me on the Cerrito City Council. For the past five years, I've been a staunch supporter of our sheriff station. I will oppose any future efforts to shut down or downgrade our Cerrito station. I'm proud that residential burglaries in Cerritos declined by 81% from 2017 to 2020. I will oppose any attempts to cut our Sky Night helicopter patrol. As a council member, I secured automatic license plate readers on vehicles equipped with those ALPRs, which aided in crime suppression. I propose having stationary ALPRs throughout the city of Cerritos.
Thank you.
I will keep Cerritos safe. Thank you.
The next candidate will be Ernie Nishi.
Okay. I agree with that. Those are all good things that he's done, and I think that is an admirable thing. But also, crime requires creative solutions. It requires research, it requires thinking of the facts that are out there, it's not just one aspect, it's the whole thing. It's mental health, it is counseling, it is education. I'm not saying that we should actually have the same amount of sheriff, but we can have more safety if we use all of the elements efficiently. Use communication, communication doesn't cost a lot of money. My candidacy is not about just thinking of simple solutions, I don't have a slogan to say, "I'll fix it in five years." That's not a right way to govern. The government is to look at the facts, you analyze the facts, and you provide reasonable, good answers. And you're not going to be perfect, but I know that I will do the best I can for the city that I love. I will do the things that we need to research the issues, to understand the facts, and make sure that we have the safety and security that we need in our city.
Thank you. The next candidate is Patricia Murray.
I am for bi-district elections, which will give our citizens opportunity to vote for somebody that's local to their community, which Cerritos could have initiated that prior to this. I'm for diversity, if you guys are ready for diversity, add a cultural richness to your community. I would like your vote. I'm very transparent. I might be new to some of the issues, but I'm not new to being a resident of Cerritos. I've been here for almost two decades, and I'm no stranger to hard work. I know my purpose, and that is to serve the citizens of Cerritos, and that's what I'm here for, and I'm here to also remind everybody else of their purpose. It's not just us serving, but we have to take ownership in our own communities, and we have to do our part. It's very important. Right now, we're in very crucial times when we have to be proactive in our own safety.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next candidate, Sam Desai.
Hello, everyone, I am the top candidate on the ballot. I'm also the only candidate who is saying yes to Measure H, which is two-term lifetime limit on our city council charter. It is the most important ballot measure that all of us have received in decades. I'm using this time to ask, vote no on FIG and vote yes on Measure H. No matter what we do, we do get to cap on career politicians and those who only run on the backing of endorsements. We do need new blood to come in, we do have resources, we do have to accept that time has come to change and move our Cerritos away from 70s management style. Vote for Sam Desai. Thank you.
Thank you. The next candidate is Jennifer Hung.
Hi, thank you again for hosting tonight's event. Neighborhood Watch captains are all standing up concerning about our city. This is very important, because Cerrito is my second home, you know? I've been living here for so long, and I have been doing the public service in the city for 14 years. And the reason why people asking me, "Why are you coming out running for this? Why are you coming out to run?" You know why? I've seen enough of the residents keep on going to the city council and complaining and complaining about all the issues that we haven't been fixed. So that's why it motivated me to come out and run. So if elected, my priorities are public safety, improvements of parks, trees, and streets, etc., promote senior youth programs, and continue to push for the higher standards of education. Also, generate revenue for the city. With my business experience and with my public service, I believe I'm the right candidate. Please vote for Jennifer Hung. Thank you.
Thank you. Before I go on to Rocky Bavon, just want to remind you to maintain decorum, please, for your closing statement. Go ahead. To maintain decorum, so to not, again, the rules state, no member shall use any language or gesture to wound, offend, or insult another member on the panel. So, if you want to make your closing statement, your time has started.
That's not my closing statement?
Your time has started, so if you want to move on.
It's fine.
Thank you.
I had to get that out, because last election, there was some things that were abuse of authority and power, and I had to address that first. It's fine.
So your closing statement time has started.
I want to thank you all very much, Neighborhood Watch, tonight. Once again, I'm the only Cerrito City Council candidate who has 28 years of financial management experience to get the job done. Balance the budget, increase the necessary cash flow to increase safety, fix our streets, repair sidewalks, streets, and buildings. It takes a knowledge of financial management. Why in the world are Cerritos voters not voting for someone that has financial management experience if they want their streets fixed? It takes someone who has financial knowledge to do this. Want to thank you very much for tonight, please vote for Rocky Bavon to make our Cerritos a safer place to live and retire. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Last person, Linda Johnson.
Thank you to the Neighborhood Watch captains for hosting tonight's event. I'm the most qualified candidate here when it comes to public safety. I'm the only candidate here that is endorsed and supported by Los Angeles County Sheriff, Alex Villanueva. He and I share the same vision, that public safety is number one. I am also very proud and honored by all my endorsements that I have received. Each and every one of them are committed to public safety, and all are committed to fully funding the Sheriff's Department. As the field deputy to the sheriff, I require a high level of integrity, an extensive background check, and I follow all moral and ethical principles. I want to add that I've also received the endorsement of the Association of Los Angeles Deputy Sheriffs, the largest association of deputy sheriffs and district attorney investigators in the United States. I have also received the endorsement of the Los Angeles County Professional Peace Officers Association, and thank you.
Thank you all for your answers. For those of you watching at home and in the audience, remember you have three options to vote for our city council elections. Election day is Tuesday, April 12th. There's the, I'm sorry, I'm going to finish, there's a, to vote, the election day on April 12th, or you can vote by mail until Tuesday, April 12th at 8:00 PM, or in person at the office of city clerk until April 10th. Please check your voter guide info for more information. I would like to take a moment also to thank the Neighborhood Watch captains for volunteering, and Cerritos library staff for assistance in making tonight happen. Thank you candidates again for participating with our Neighborhood Watch captains candidate forum, and I hope you have a great evening. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, good night, everyone.
That's over. Wait, I should turn off the mic.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.